Good morning, everyone. Today is November 7th. Oops, I just remembered it's my brother's birthday and I forgot to tell you. I'll take care of that during the break. So it's November 7th, 2017. It's a little after nine o'clock, still didn't fall back, but we'll fake it. I hereby call this meeting to order.
Let's call the roll.
Chairman, President.
Present.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Present.
Commissioner Donald.
Present.
David, you have a form. If everyone would please stand. Mr. Gardens. Mr. Gardens officially is not.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please remain standing. And I would ask Minister and Elder Richard Romero of the Living Word Church from Cuesta to share some inspirational words with us here today.
I want to thank you for your long time, for your prayer, and so long for calling me and giving the honor to bring this prayer this morning. But I wanted to read the scripture and so waiting for this kind of time that we're honoring the veterans. But we also keep in mind that even at this moment, we have bad news from Texas that we kind of heard. So we kind of keep all the people that are hurt and affected with all these severe fatalities. We don't understand why, but we know that we, in our declarations, we had to pledge a vision. We're a nation under God, and we put our trust, even our currency tells us, in God we trust. The scripture that I wanted to share with you is John 15:13. And it tells us, "Greater love has no name than one than this," that to lay down one's life for his friends. And this we do honor our veterans because there's in the past that laid down their life with a great cost, because there was a cost, and we can enjoy today's liberty. And we can be so free in this country and enjoy the liberty that we have. There was a price, and even myself, myself, I'm very proud because I had a father that served in World War I, and then there was five of us that served in the military. So to me, I take great pride in knowing that we have a country that we can enjoy. Not perfect, but we know that we live in a great country. So at this time, we pray, God command us to always pray for those that are in authority over us, starting from a president all the way down to the officials in this county of towns, because the responsibility lies for them to do this to the best of their ability to pass whatever it has to be passed for the better of this country and for the people. So let's pray today and trust that God would work all things for the good, as he said. And we're believing and trusting that God would do that because he is a great God, and there's nothing impossible for him. For Father, today, as you gave me this privilege and this time, to lead this prayer forward, and my heart goes, Father, even right now, for all the people that have suffered through these times, Lord God, even through the hurricanes, through the fires, through the levees, and even today, as we remember the people in Texas, from them. We always been a people of this country, and so we are known, a country under God, that will respond to situations that we have sometimes no control. But Father, you know all things, even before they even happened, Father, we don't understand. Our mind is living to understand the why. But we can put our trust, even as those in the past, started from where this country was built, under foundations and principles that were established under you, Lord God. And people came to this country for the liberty of having that freedom to choose, to exercise their faith. And faith is something that we hope for, of evidence not yet seen, but we know we have a hope and a trust that God, you would work all things for us, that would make us great as a nation, it's not a person, but it's you that we put our faith in. And today, thank you, Lord God, for giving me this privilege, and that we, as a people, would never be ashamed of who we serve, because our faith is in a God that created all things, even our very breath that we have today comes from you. We came from you, you made us, and you made us for your glory and your honor that we will never forget. Father, we belong to Heavenly Father that so loved me, that one time, you know the value of life, because you gave your Son to this world, because you loved the someone. You gave your only begotten Son, that who served and believed in you shall not perish but have everlasting life. And Father, even this day, we honor you first of all, but through that, we honor the veterans, the men and women that stood and gone to other countries, to other nations, because there's love and compassion on people of these United States. Do you know that there's people that would enjoy the freedom that we have today? But Father, we thank you that there's men that were calm and were willing to sacrifice their life. And even today, we pray protection for those veterans, for those military men and women, wherever they are, that you would have your hand upon them, that they can lift their voices to you and trust that what they're doing is because there's a cause. And I pray, Father, that you pray and pray protection for them. And Father, that they can have a peace, wherever they may be, there'll be a peace in their heart, that they know, that they love the freedom that we enjoy here today. Father, give us an awareness every day that we're here because we have a plan and purpose in your will, Lord God, we have a plan and purpose. So I pray today, and through this nation, I pray for a president, whatever decision he makes, Lord God, that it be directed, and that he gets counsel from you above, Lord God, because he's under you. And we pray for all those that are in office in our, at the White House, through this state, our governor, and all the officials. Father, starting even into this Taos County, Lord God, because we have our situations, even in this Taos County, and in our city, in our villages, in Cuesta. Father, keep us always, that we can look at others' interests and concern, that we would always hold people in prayer, and hold them that they're worth, they have worth, Lord God, they have value. And we can keep that in mind, like you said, to love God with all of our heart, but also love our neighbor as our shelter. And Father, this day, we do honor our military, and keep them and protect them, and we pray for this meeting even today, that everything will be all for your honor and your glory. And we pray that, in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning. Please remain standing. Commissioner Romero said we did have a census act of hatred in Texas, and that hatred runs throughout our country, now even our community here, and we would just honor those victims of that and the previous ones at the moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Special thanks to the VFW Post 3259 for always being there for us and for our community. Next item on the agenda, commissioners, is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I solemnly approve the agenda with the postponement of Item 8.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda with postponement of Item 8, the public hearing regarding ordinance 2017-2, an ordinance implementing American system for Taos County.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go to the second.
What question? Why are we postponing that? Commissioner Donald had a language change she needed to talk about, and I just got clarification out of you that was brought to me, but it just seems there's some concerns, maybe it is necessary. Mr. Court.
Chairman, I have no knowledge of any concern at this time. We published the ordinance itself, isn't it, but actually policies we asked if it was a resolution, if there's problems with the personal policies individually, we can recommit those to the 21st, to the first meeting in December. But the ordinance itself, I would at least like to hear what the concerns are, if there are true concerns from the community, because that's the point of the public hearing, is understood if we don't want to move forward, or we won't move forward, that's up to the rule of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll go ahead and withdraw my second, but ask Commissioner Donald to draw the first motion as well. Maybe it makes sense, Commissioner, to, let's hear the presentation at that time. Ms. Robinson, we can then postpone to a specific date.
Okay. Chairman, commissioners, if we chose to postpone the public hearing to a date certain, we would not need to republish. If you chose to table or make substantive changes, the publication would have to start all over again.
Commissioner, can we hear the presentation then, do you think, and then we'll go back? So would you revise your motion, please, to whatever your wishes are to accept the agenda as posted?
I solemnly that we accept the agenda as presented.
I'll go to the second, Mr. Trump. Yeah, we motion in a second to accept the agenda as presented, and for call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Next item on the agenda is Item 5. This is a Veterans Day proclamation, which I will now read. We have it here, and we're waiting. Commissioner Douglas has signature to make it complete, and so it will stay with staff until all signatures run. But I would like to read the proclamations for Veterans Day 2017 now to the record. Whereas Veterans Day, originally known as Armistice Day, was our custom to honor those who died in World War I. The pact ended in the early 1940s, and was changed to honor all veterans who have served in the U.S. military. And whereas since the birth of our nation, Americans have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our way of life. With honor, many generations of servicemen and women have put their lives on the line here, and may have our independence, and may live in a world that is safer. And whereas we recognize the sacrifice of these brave men and women in our Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, that demonstrate their unmatched selflessness, and their service reminds us to never forget those who have given everything to defend our homeland, on this day and every day, we pay tribute to America's sons and daughters who have answered our country's call. And whereas Taos County's sons and daughters have marched to baton, fled the shores of Normandy, in the mountains of Korea, the jungles of Vietnam, and in the deserts of Iraq and Afghanistan, and so it is proper to honor these veterans of Taos, who have served with unselfish love of God and country to preserve this great land. And whereas Taos County's sons and daughters have never refused their country's tall tolerance, so we, the citizens of Taos County, wish to express our lasting gratitude and admiration to our veterans, once leaders of the armed forces, are now pillars of our community. Let us show our appreciation by honoring all of our veterans and giving them extraordinary gratitude they so rightly deserve. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, New Mexico, that on Saturday, November 11, 2017, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Veterans Day for Taos County. We do hereby call upon citizens, schools, businesses, clubs, and the news media to pay tribute to our troops and veterans by displaying the flag of the United States of America, and by using the freedom and privilege that so many Taosanios fought and gave their life for. Signed, Taos County Commissioner. Thank you for whatever prepared that proclamation, that's perfect, Court. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, assistants, employees. I just want to thank my immediate family members. There's one team at this time, my immediate families, who have served in the armed forces, four, two girls, two boys, four elected to the U.S. Senate. So there's nine teams.
Thank you. Mr. Trump.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'd like to do the same as well. I have plenty of articles and acts that have served in presence, most especially my father, that is from the military as well.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Next item on the agenda is rated six citizens concerned, any citizen wishing to address the commission on a agenda item or on a thought, please limit your time to five minutes or less, and we would love to hear from you. No action can be taken during this time. Our staff can pick up a lead on this and move forward with something if it's pertinent.
Mr. Trump, going back to Item 5, by one, did you feel the veterans spoke?
Yes.
Is there a motion or anything?
To accept it? Well, by our signature, we all accept it. We can? Do you wish to make a motion to accept it?
Can we make a motion? It's not as of...
Sure.
Not harmful.
Someone will determine that we accept, and I'll put out the 2017 Veterans Day.
And I'll second that. For call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald.
Yes. I'll give this to Anissa to get large signature on it. Sunday, Saturday is the official ceremony on Taos Plaza, so maybe at that time, it can be presented or we can play it. Present? All right. So now back to Item 6. Any citizen wishing to speak, please, Mr. Philke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It makes me feel so good personally to see that POW MIA flag, the American flag. That's one issue. There was a picture on Facebook this week about bottles dumped in the landfill, and it doesn't seem like there was much information on whether it's... It seems like it's towns' jurisdiction for recycling plant, and crusher is no longer... I don't know, is that something that needs to go to landfill board, or does the town have the authority to just shut down recycling?
The town runs the recycling.
Yeah. But it's not anything that's going to the landfill board that you know of.
It's been in front of the landfill board for probably the last seven months.
Oh. Thank you. And do we have redistricting coming up any time soon? Is it relevant to the commission?
Every 10 years, I think. Census is completely...
Okay, but it's not something that happens very regularly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on with the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Philke. Item 7 is Minutes, approval of the October 5, 2017, regular meeting minutes, commissioners. Motion to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Trump.
A motion at a second to approve the October 5, 2017, regular meeting minutes. For call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald.
Yes.
Chairman, President.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, we will conduct the public hearing. Item 8, this is a public hearing regarding ordinance 17-2, an ordinary implementing... An ordinance, I'm sorry, implementing American system for Taos County, enacting rules for hiring, promotion, discharge, and general regulations with Taos County employees, and repealing and replacing ordinance 2006-1, Taos County personnel policy and all amendments. This will be presented and conducted by our HR Director, Mr. Weber. Ms. Weber, how are you today?
Good. Good morning, Chairman, I'm with the board.
Good morning.
I respectfully request your support in the authorization of Taos County ordinance 2017-2, which is an ordinance that establishes an American system for Taos County, together with management, legal, and other members of the HR team who worked diligently to generate what we believe to be an effective solution to an aged process that is not presently as efficient as it could be in terms of governing personnel matters. We believe this ordinance and subsequent policies offer that solution. The ordinance, as written, restates and claims the management rights given to the board by statute. It bestows the authority from the board to the county manager to facilitate organizational and operational workflow, and it further defines what the role and responsibility of the human resources director is for Taos County. I trust that you had an opportunity to review the document, and I stand for questions.
I think what we will do is open up a public hearing and hear any comments, and then at the end, when we close it, Ms. Weber, any questions the commission may have or comments to make after we hear from the public first.
Okay.
Okay? So nothing else in your opening presentation?
Nothing else at this time.
Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you wish to address the commission regarding ordinance 2017-2, you will need to be sworn in by the clerk, and then you will be free to give your comments to the commission. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time in the public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to address the commission regarding ordinance 2017-2? Mr. Philke.
I don't think I need to be sworn in.
Yes, you can.
I just have a question.
I have enough between you don't...
Do you swear? Do you swear affirm your open penalty and lawful perjury testimony about the case for Batson? Please state your name.
Neil Philke. I'm just wanting a copy of this might be a real to comment.
Mr. Philke, they've been available since it was published in the Taos News at the Office of the County Clerk and the Town County Attorney's Office, so today is the public hearing, today is the comment. So if it gets, if it doesn't pass today, or it's continued to date certain, you'll be able to see it then. If it's republished, look for the new publication of it in the Taos.
But there's nothing that's available to observe today.
It's there, it's been available, today's the comment. So you could probably get a copy over at the clerk's office still, but the comment's happening now.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission members?
Who is your right hand? Do you swear affirm your open penalty and lawful perjury testimony about the case for Batson? Please state your name. Jane O'Keefe.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to talk about it, but as an employee, I just wanted to voice some concerns that I have. I don't know if it's necessarily with the ordinance approving the personnel policy or the regulations. Basically, my main concern is with the longevity portion of it and who it applies to. I am in complete support of the fact that we need a personnel policy because ours is severely outdated. However, the employees that the personnel policy covers is basically all your department heads, your door and supervisors, and your confidential employees. We are not covered in the correct bargaining agreement, so for many years, the longevity portion is the only increases that we have been able to cover. Those of us that are facing retirement and getting closer to that, that is a concern. I think addressing it as performance-based regulations is, could possibly be looked at as an incentive. I'm not saying for your department heads, your department heads need to be upgraded. But when you're talking about your lower supervisors, they dedicated their lives here, and I think that should come up for something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman. Commissioner, that would be relevant to the resolution. Please remember to focus on the merit ordinance, so we really need to limit comments as to what's contained in the 70s merit ordinance. When the resolution comes about the personnel policies, Ms. Elon, I believe the longevity piece would be addressed in that section. We won't make it come back up, but we just need to keep it later for the public hearing on the ordinance about the text of the sexual ordinance.
Anything else? Seeing none, and I will close the public hearing. At this time, thank you, Ms. Elon, thank you, Mr. Philke, for your comments. Ms. Weber.
I stand for questions specific to the ordinance.
Commissioner Donald is first, and then I'll go to Commissioner Romero.
I think I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I had mentioned in a previous meeting was just some clarification of language in Item 7, Page 4, where it says, "Does not have access." I've seen throughout the ordinance and I guess the personnel policies, it either says it's not entitled to or it does not have a right to. So it was just a clarification where it says it does not have access to the procedure
You're referring to the last sentence of that paragraph where it states, "The unclassified physician does not have access to the disciplinary or dispute procedures outlined in the Taos County personnel policy."
Yeah, the last sentence, "The unclassified physician does not have access to the disciplinary or dispute procedures outlined in the Taos County personnel policy." I just thought the language, if it were changed to "does not have a right to" or "is not entitled to," is clearer than "does not have access to." And that was really my only concern about this ordinance at this time. Want to address "does not have access"? What does that mean?
Basically, as an unclassified employee, those procedures, the procedures outlined within the policy specific to disputes and disciplinary process are not readily available. We do not extend those to department heads. They are at will.
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, it's pretty much the same here, it's, I think it's the same thing, it's not entitled to, does not have access to. If that change passes, it's a subtle change, I don't think it... If that change passes, it's a subtle change, I don't think it would require a complication of the ordinance.
I just think it would be clear if it was not entitled to.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I was wondering if maybe Mr. Cordova could also talk more about the support on it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, once again, we're through the process, the reason we broke it down this way, previously, we had adopted the entire personnel policy by ordinance, so we have over under page document of ordinance policies. The purpose for doing it differently gives us a lot of options at all, mainly gives us the ability to change things quicker into the future. These old policies were adopted in '06, changed in '08 and '12. We haven't even touched them since '12. That's a big liability to the county, that's a problem for us. By doing the merit ordinance as a seven-page document, giving us the parameters for the personnel policies by resolution, things that change, we have the ability to adapt to quicker. The other component of this that's not included today is the management of rules and regulations. Those will also be brought to the board for your vote, but those will be brought upon completion of all of the rest of these. The resolution, if there's problems with it, fundamental issues today, we can still make some changes to that resolution and bring it back on the November 21st, meaning to try and work on any issues that have any problem. The ordinance is what we appear to date, and because of the process for an ordinance, the publication, we are certainly recommending approval of the ordinance today. It's important for us to keep moving forward on this, and we really are exposed by having these old ordinance policies continue to be our governing policy.
Standing, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Mr. Chairman, I'm just thankful that the staff in Louisiana has spoken out, but I was just wondering if there were others that have some concerns, and just wanting to make sure that they're all addressed, as well as the concerns of Commissioner O'Donnell, before we move on to any decision today.
So Commissioner O'Donnell's remanded change of the name, Ms. Nebother?
Yes.
Just that clarification on the language, still okay on that? And so, when we get to that stage, I'd like to have Miss Elam come back up and refresh us with what her concern is, and I feel that there's more concerns out there, and people are feeling intimidated to not come and speak to us. This is the time to speak to us, so during the public hearing, and when we get to the next phase of this, certainly, if you have concerns, the commission wants to hear. But...
Oh, I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
Do you have to reopen the public hearing in order for you? I'm willing to do. Do you want to address this regarding this ordinance, Ms. Nebother?
I think so, because I think the concern that was brought to me this week...
Do you want to come and have a sidebar with Quayle and make sure it's what we need to be doing at this time?
It was just brought to me again, so...
It's like Judge Elam's, I watched that trial. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll definitely deal with all the resolution issues when we get to the resolution, we want to hear it, we want to talk about it, so we just want to make sure we're clear that the ordinance is definitely different from the resolution on the policy. I was a little confused too, so, Bex, you good? Bex, you good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Time to go to the commission. I have a motion to approve, Chairman, ordinance twenty seventeen dash two, the ordinance implementing merit system for Tows County.
That's the one. I'll go in second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty seventeen dash two, ordinance implementing merit system for Tows County and acting rules for hiring, promotion, discharge, and general regulations of Tows County employees and repealing and replacing ordinance two thousand six dash one.
And Mr. Chairman, would the commissioner agree to including the language of does not have access to, this change to, is not entitled to?
Yes, that was acknowledged by Ms. Nebother letter.
Okay, thank you.
And it was part of the motion, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was part of Commissioner Blakenhart's motion?
Yes.
Further discussion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Navy, the Resource Staff, legal administration, I think this is really important, I think this is a big move for Tows County, both in the flexibility that they designed into it with allowing the resolutions to take care of certain rules, and also equally important, if not more, is I think that the merit-based initiatives that are written into this ordinance are going to make a big difference in efficiency and fairness as we move forward. So I really appreciate it, and I'm glad to be a part of it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no other comments, put a call over.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Chairman Nigah?
Commissioner, just a point of the next step, since it's passed, it will be recorded today, it will go into effect December seventh, and I'll let you announce the resolution on the next step. I just want to make sure it's a confusing process.
That's what we do about... Ms. Nebother, thank you, anyone staying for the next panel, which is either denying resolution and ordinances? I demand approval of resolution number twenty seventeen dash fifty-five, this is a resolution adopting the Tows County personnel policy dated November seventh, twenty seventeen. Again, Ms. Nebother.
Yes, thank you. I am again requesting your support for the authorization of this resolution. Staff have put in a lot of time and hours into proposed policies that would be set forth by the action of this resolution, and I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to review, I hope they have, and I also stand for questions and comments.
Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, this is the second piece, I think this is the meet that everybody's been interested in, this is a resolution, if it passes today, it will become effective December seventh. It's not an ordinance, so substantive changes may be made today, may be made again on the 21st, but final passage due to the merit ordinance that we just passed would need to be on the seventh. But substantive changes can be made today, this isn't published, so... Do you have any procedural questions?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is if we have employees which would like to, will treat it as a public hearing, they don't need to be sworn in, I definitely want to hear from the employees. Ms. Nebother, do you have any presentation you'd like to open up, or do you want to hear these concerns, and then we'll address them at the end?
I'd be welcome to bring your concerns, I'm just gonna...
Okay.
Thank you.
Bex?
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. I do want to thank Mr. Cordova and Ms. Nebother and the union, and we were all participants in the negotiations regarding these personnel policies, but there were issues that were brought forth to us that we have concerns with, that we weren't able to provide to them in a timely fashion, so I have concerns. And basically, a lot of the concerns that I'm bringing forth, or the few concerns that I bring, are not even union eligible employees, because we're government of the CBA, this is for confidential employees, yada, yada, where we don't have jurisdiction over that, it falls under the manager's purview, but I do want to bring them forth, and one of them is the longevity, and the other one is the cap for the 240. I know you guys are aware that we have 240 hours a year as annually, but a cap has been established at this time, and a lot of the employees are concerned with that. Say your cap in July, all the other time that you don't take off from July to December is basically lost or not there for the employee. So I'm concerned with the cap for all of the employees, not just the CBA employees. And longevity, I know that the merit-based system that you guys just passed, I, hopefully, that the directors and the manager are fair in their assessments of the, of providing raises for the employees based on merit. That is a concern to me, because as you're aware, there are some directors that don't like, or elected officials that don't like employees, who probably won't be fair, so we have to do something to take care of that. And those are the concerns that I have at this time, that were brought to me all week.
I know one thing regarding a cap, that is, it's a huge financial liability. We both worked at the town, and it was an opportunity for employees that had 400 hours, and if they all left at one time, the town would have been faced with layoffs and stuff, but it ended up costing the budget. Now, what the number should be, I don't know, that's six weeks, but that's still a huge financial liability, and I think our employees should take the time off that they have and use their leave in a planned fashion, is how I'd like to see everyone come up with a plan at the start of the fiscal year, you know, senior employees get first pay and stuff like that, that's just my personal opinion of it. I know the reason for the cap is it's purely financial, because it could really, if you and Gina and everybody failed at the same time and retired, you know, and it just really hit the budget hard, and I think that's the reason for cap. Now, the number, I don't, I mean, I don't know the industry standard for this, but that's just what I remember in my past life.
And I understand that, because a lot of counties, cities, we've picked to your talent, it's to get a sick in the annual.
I like that.
And I understand that completely. As you're aware, or not, I'm retiring probably August, September, and there's nowhere near the 240 that I have, so I won't be breaking the county anytime soon, but there are employees who do have it, and I honestly, at this point, I don't think there's anybody in this county that's going to retire, that will take that without taking into account the fact that they have to give a heads up, so that it can be built into the budget. So, but it's a concern that some people do have, and I'm deciding to bring it forth.
Chairman, Mr. Cordova?
And then you can correct me, but I think we made a change to the 240 as in previously in our policies.
Yes, I did.
We did, we made a change to the cap.
Yes, you did. Previously, individuals who were retiring could clearly then be paid for the entire amount of underneath of the headband, which again, is the ability to determine whether how that's going to affect your person, which is obviously the direction that we went to the 240, which is what we allow our employees to carry over annually.
So we made a change to be consistent with what we endeavoured the county to...
Yes, what we allow them to carry over.
And, Mr. Chairman, I like that personal leave time, you talked about the combination of both, I think, people.
And I honestly don't, but, you know me, I just glad I bring it forth and bring it to your attention, and then do what you need to do in your discussions.
Because when we changed it at the town, it went from 240 to at least 360, the combination of PTO.
The PTO with the leave and the...
You don't get anything for your sick leave, you're healthy, and you actually get pen lines.
It's called prospect. But I do thank you for your attention, thank you.
Thank you, Bex.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as the chairman mentioned, it is a liability, it's hanging up, so that would be something we have to put on our financials at the end of the fiscal year. Safety doesn't carry a value that it's carried over original value, it's use it or lose it, so that is why we, why we need to sit through it.
Good morning.
I just wanted to add that the liability for the county, when we closed June 30th, 2017 fiscal year, the compensated due absence report for the, what we booked on our financials, was over $600,000 in accumulated vacation and comp pay, so that would be due to county employees upon separation.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Could I, Mr. Chairman, come here or recommendation from that, I mean, are we talking, instead of the 240, go up to 300? If I could get an understanding, it's very confusing to me how this whole thing works, so...
Has to be divisible by 40, so you'd either be 320 or 280.
280, yeah.
Well, it has to be divisible by 40, is what we...
Now, 240, I'm confused, the cap is 240, then are you saying it should be at least 280?
No, it has to be divisible by 40, so whatever you choose, it has to be divisible by 40, so if you went from 240 up, the next increment would be 280, then the next increment after that would be 360, 400.
So could, I'd like to hear from, as honest as I could, is there...
Do you want to think about that?
And frankly, I think that I just wanted to bring this information to you, I need to meet with the body, and I'll have to meet with some of the employees who are confidential, who have the concerns, and we'll get back to you before it's adopted, is that right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the beauty of the way we're doing it is we can make changes anytime, this resolution can be changed anytime by another resolution, so...
And that's what's good about the resolution as opposed to the ordinance?
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we are looking at going into negotiation, and about here, this is the kind of thing we typically take up in negotiations with the CBA, and the last negotiation we settled on 240, the change was the timing of it. So I think we're, the 240 seems to fit right now, if we want to talk about that, certainly can, and we will talk about that going forward, it is the liability that's the concern.
We're really going to bring that back on the spot now, I like the fact that you will research this, talk amongst the employees, and then you can always bring a recommendation back to us and change it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, could someone point out where we're talking about this longevity issue, where is it in the document?
Longevity has been removed from the Spreco's policy, it currently only exists within the collective bargaining agreement.
So what does that mean?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, basically, the longevity was a negotiated mechanism with the CBA, we provided that longevity to union eligible individuals when we finished the negotiation. Because of the old policies and the way they kind of tied our hands, I extended that longevity to everybody over the last few years until we were able to get to these new personal policies. I took longevity out of the personnel policies for department heads and classifieds everyone else, because I strongly want to give them yearly evaluations and merit raises based on their performance. I do not think it's fair for a department head that may have had a very great year initiating a lot of new changes or making things happen for the county, to have to wait three years for a raise if they were eligible for it now. They should be able to be evaluated yearly and compensated accordingly, based on their performance, not on their ability to wait only four, five, six years to get another raise. So that was the big reason why we took out longevity. Chances are, those individuals will be receiving more of a raise yearly if they would have had to wait for longevity based on their...
Mr. Chairman, I know we talk a lot about evaluations, but we don't have any kind of evaluations in place yet, so at some point...
This builds a bit.
We weren't able to do an evaluation until we were able to do this kind of personnel policy and ordinance, so now we are able to do it, we had it, you're right, we absolutely had it, which is a big reason why we created so many disparities and problems throughout the ten years of this policy. We've created a lot of problems that we hope to fix with this new policy.
And my other concern is, I think, Mr. Cordova, you mentioned to me that a lot of staff don't like the rules regarding allowing their children to come in, and while it may be a liability, I do think we need to have some kind of emergency language where if it's a snow day, that they be allowed to bring their kids in for a couple of hours. I think it, you know, we can't be waiting for U N A to possibly create a daycare facility at the old senior citizen center, that's going to take a long time, so... So, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if it's in line. I'd just like to make a motion to postpone this. Rather than create it and continually amend it, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting so that we can get some clarification on the 240.
I have a motion, I have a motion to postpone this to a specific date being the next meeting. Do I hear a second?
Hold on one second.
Further discussion. Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, the rules of allowing children at work aren't a part of this resolution at all. That's a whole separate thing that you have hearing today. So that isn't something you're going to be making a decision on today. I have them flexible. I do ask my department heads to be flexible on those issues. I cannot allow children at work. It's just not fair. If you think about all the different departments that we have at the county, we can't be having children in E911 dispatch. We can't have children tagging along with the Sheriff's Department. We can't have children going over to ABC or JBC with their parents. It's not fair to everyone else if we're allowing only a handful of people to bring their children to work. We certainly won't be flexible with children. We are, we have been. We offer more time off than most places. Honestly, we get more vacation days every year. And we get the 240, we get sick leave. Sick leave can be used for childcare situations. So there's more than enough opportunity for people to be able to meet the needs of childcare. I myself have had to deal with childcare issues and I did the requirement taking out my sick leave and not coming into work. So I think that's an issue that and would be great and it would be awesome if we could just have our kids running around House County all the time, but it's not the best use of our taxpayer dollars or the reason why we're here. We need to be able to be opposite of the taxpayer we serve every day, whether it's at office say or the detention say, the kids should not be allowed at work. And so I vote stand firm on that. It's a liability issue. Our sheriff wouldn't like that. And it's also a problem for those, if those kids got hurt here at work, it wouldn't be how would the county answer that if the child got hurt at work? We would be the ones liable and responsible for that.
So, Mr. Chairman, where will that issue be addressed then?
In the manager's work rules. And you know, it's no different than we currently have right now. We currently do not allow children at work in the policy that we have offered even for the last 10 years. So nothing's changed from where we are going forward.
Okay, well, thanks for clarifying that. I just wanted to say, I don't think you see a lot of kids running around anywhere they want. I think there would be discretion on sheriff's office wouldn't be bringing their kids, anybody from juvenile detention. But you know, if somebody wants, has an emergency and needs there to bring their kids up to, say, E911 for a couple of hours. I mean, maybe there are other venues. I think what I would like to do is sit down with Ms. Weber so I can completely understand these issues and that we're talking about. Because I'm not, I'm not clear. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Blackhorn, and then I'll go to Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thanks, Chairman. So the longevity issue, of course, is separate from the resolution. And the comment by Commissioner O'Donnell making the motion referenced the 240 hour cap. I personally like the chairman's take on that, you know. One of the great advantages to what we're doing today, of course, as we said, is stability is flexibility. You know, we'll give Becky and anybody else in staff a chance to talk this over and come up with a recommendation for something higher, I assume. I doubt the recommendation would be for 200, but but I just don't, I don't think it's a good idea to postpone it on that basis. I, I think that we should continue moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the dialogue, the communication. So with that, I'll go ahead and let Ron my second again.
Okay, I have a motion. Still waiting for a second. Hearing that continues. Ms. Weber, anything to add?
Anything specific?
Okay. At this time, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2017-55, Resolution adopting House County Personnel Policy dated November 7, 2017. So moved. I have a motion. Okay, go ahead and second. And I have a second. Any further discussion? Kirk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. No, Commissioner Blackhorn.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordova. Just want to thank Ms. Weber, HR staff, people, and everybody. This has been, like, two years in the making to try and get to this point where we are in the modern age as the best way to put it. I'm so thankful and so grateful to the commission as well for your foresight. This is a huge initiative. Thank you.
But the statement has been made that basically this is a living document and be changed because of the resolution. So if we find things that make more sense for the benefit of our employees, I really want to see those changes being brought to us as, as things occur.
I'd like to thank the union, Becky, Lou, Patty, Rachel. We've met with them four or five times in the past year. And we got the collective bargaining done. We got this done, and it does speak to the collaborative effort we've been able to, to make. Because we've gone to war, but you know, we're also happy to be working together. So special thanks to the union.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, so I, what I hear is then when it's appropriate, as far as we're going back as suggested, commence.
She can, Gina can, I mean, whoever can get it together and get a new resolution to be added to this. It's a living document. And if we agree that it should be changed, and I look for there to be changes. So it's totally for the employees to make suggestions.
And Chairman Commissioners, it's not effective until December 7th. So if there are changes that need to be made, you don't need to bring back a new resolution at that time. We can just sort of change it and get it done.
We'll look for the challenge and be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a tense presentation. First being a presentation on the Juvenile Detention Center Presented by Andrew McLeary, JBC Lieutenant. Thank you for being here this morning. How's it going?
Very well, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I kind of presented to you guys in front of, or in front of you guys on YouTube, and I really haven't said anything since. We did pass our P recently, and I actually kind of wanted to give you an update. I was hoping to have a little artwork available, but I don't have it. We are working diligently with the architect, our architect, as well as the architect that's utilized by the state for their LCA, which is licensing certification administration. We're working really closely with them to kind of fine tune how we're going to change the facility to meet the requirements for both the juvenile detention side as well as the residential treatment side. We are, I sent the, I met with the architect this morning, actually, and we are, he's going to draw the final revisions and we're going to send those off to the state hopefully by the end of the week. Being that he's kind of working pro bono, he's putting a few of his other deadlines first. But he is working as hard as he can on ours. We're working on policies and procedures, and we're actually working directly with the LCA to get those approved and get them worked out to where they're meeting the policy procedures that are required for the RTC side of it. And then we're incorporating those into the policies and procedures for their approvals to be able to utilize both sides. And working out, a lot of it is working out this flow of how we're going to maintain the site and sound separation between the juvenile detention kids and the residential treatment kids. So there's a lot of work that's kind of going on underneath underneath the table and it's kind of hidden. But we are working diligently on it. The state, LCA, has stated that they want to see this. All of our policies and procedures approved by January 1st to be legislated. That's just late session because everything kind of ranks to a halt at that point. And so we're really hoping to get them done by January 1st and start working on the construction. If we can't start it earlier, we're hoping to start the construction and changes to the facility by that time. We're hoping to, it's still a little bit ambitious to get that December 1st open date, but that's really what my goal is.
Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Could you please give us the name of the architect who's doing the pro bono?
His name is Mark Golden.
And we should thank him. How many hours has he put in?
He's put in quite a few. I'm not sure of the exact number because we just, like I said, we just sent him out, but it's over 100 of these. So he's, he's put in quite a few.
Maybe at some point we could recognize him for his service.
I think that would be very, very, a very, very good idea.
And then for legislative discussion, do you think there'll be any capital allowance for this?
Not at this time, but I'm hoping as we progress forward that we can go for capital. This, like I said, the state is really, really excited to see this. During our last meeting for policies and procedures, the LCA had mentioned that it's such a he gave a scenario that there's explorers who go out and do things first, and it's kind of uncharted. It's kind of, they're the brave ones. And then there's the trailblazers who go out and kind of lay the foundation for everybody else. And then there's the pioneers, and then there's the people that fail and after. And he mentioned that House County is really being an explorer in this situation, that we're kind of breaking new ground and we're not really, this is kind of, it really is uncharted water. We're, they're working really closely with us so we don't fall off the edge of the map. And what he said is he would really love to see a residential treatment center like this in every detention center in the state. So he gave the people that were in the meeting kudos for doing this, but the kudos really goes to the commission for having the forward thinking to really approve this because it is, it is groundbreaking.
And, Mr. Chairman, we set aside, what was it? 300,000 out of the 399,000?
We actually put the 300,000 under reserves. How can you mark that as reserves?
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Lieutenant, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a great day. Really good.
I just wanted to thank Lieutenant McLeary, Tabu Hainio, Gordon Abita. Before, before we're thinking, as he mentioned, we are giving kudos around the state just for even thinking about this. And the fact that we're working on this so quickly and diligently makes it even more effective than we might. So I thank them. They are oftentimes moving faster than me trying to get things going and trying to keep things in the forefront so that we're not missing anything. But also making sure we capture everything. We're not missing any crossing T99. So thank you. Thanks for doing this.
And, Mr. Chairman, as a precursor to possible legislative funding, maybe the county manager or Mr. McLeary could go to one of the criminal justice legislative attorney committee meetings to give an update on, you know, what we're doing.
I'd be happy to do that.
I think that would be a great way to let the legislators know. So maybe in the future, we would get some money.
I'd be willing to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right. Moving on then to our next presentation, and we are wildfire prevention and education, presentation by the Tierfire Chief, Chris Cortez. And other than the ugly picture of that God forsaken bridge, I'm really looking forward to. Good morning, Mr. Cortez. Thanks for being here today.
Good morning. Thank you. So for five years now, I've been contracting for the county as a wildland coordinator. And so I have an update here. So I wanted to give some background here. I've been, I put this picture up there to show that I've been there on the ground. Helicopters, aircraft, engine hangars. And I've gotten myself into some tricky situations. And not only that, I've told myself other tricky situations. I've seen houses burn, the shit never burned. And what I want to do is get, stop chasing the tail and get ahead of this to where we're doing more prevention and education. Yeah, so we've had some pretty big fires. We all know the hunger fire, Enzo Auto Fire. There was one outside of a Costco called the OSHA fire that, that went to an incident management team.
About 1,500 meters?
And there are many more, many more that have been caught. Suppression is a, is a great tool. I want to start emphasizing more education. And so what we've got here, this is a pretty famous photo of from 1909 to 1979. The camera has progressed in the same place. And this is show, this shows a forest that has denied fire. So what we have to do is reintroduce fire or mechanically thin it to get it back to a healthy forest. And the bottom picture on right there is a very overstocked forest. And not only, not burned at the low intensity of the top left forest in 1909, which has burned for thousands of years. Now it burns catastrophically. And then the lights all wash shades and end up just destroy some property. So what we've done here, we have our community wildfire protection plan. Court team, this is a court team meeting, it's over here. And here we get together, it's a wonderful collaboration. We have the county, the town, State Forestry, Forest Service, VOM. Many agencies get together around this roundtable and discuss the problems and offensive possible solutions. One thing that I didn't include in the presentation that I want to mention is the successful non-federal land grant that we put in the House County in 135 acres, so 300,000 dollars. And our next one is in progress right now in Pot Creek and San Antonio. Along with that, we have a cost of water. Yes, it means a lot. And they have a cost share program for the annual pays 15%. So here we work that out, we map that out.
Three Lopes and then they retire them.
I know you. Just douchey. Here we have, every year we do, this is, we're going on year number 23. This is the intense circle of wildfire. The JESS circle, fire, sorry. The JESS circle. Agency, okay? All the fire departments, regional fire protection association is what I'm trying to say. This is our annual event here, 131 night in basic firefighter training. This is where we try to get all the fire departments to get on board and learn the basics, keep themselves safe, be safer, more effective firefighters. But it's really important with that, I've been coordinating this at the bill from on the burn a few years ago. So now this is year number four that I'm coordinating this. And usually you have 24 students and almost twice as many instructors and assistants. It's really uneasy. But we bring a lot of paper if we can. Public education is where we need to go next. Commissioner O'Donnell says, you're going to be rid of it. You're in for a handle. The annual picnic where the community comes together really strong and does this big education program. So we try to move around the county. This is a great tool, the San table that the Forest Service brings around for us. It's real time, Google imagery, and we actually light a fire to it and we, you know, can use lighter or laser flame and program in what happens and the fuels and the smoke and all that stuff. And it demonstrates what fire would do. Great public education tool and firefighter training. And a big point of mine is to get the children involved. So we've got to get around, get the kids involved with these subjects the, the kids involved with these subjects and, and understand that we need, so us to live with fire. And then home responsibility, that's where firewise, fire adapted community, uh, ready set go programs come into play here. A lot of really great publications, great programs. And, uh, this is what I see a lot of it. It says evacuate from wildfire. Why? I'm the only one in danger. Firefighter says, "Not exactly." Because we're putting ourselves out there for, is this necessary? Let's learn to live with it. Let's learn, if, if we can, have a wildfire, just wash it down communities, go to low intensity surface fire, move on through, you know, hardened homes, defensible space. Uh, nobody has to evacuate or have to fire your lives and firefighters don't, aren't coming in the other way, you know, on phone traffic and all that. At this time, there are seven firewise communities and hope to keep growing. Uh, they're developing, they're, they're, uh, this is just in the past five years, four, five years, that we've got these communities that are really getting more involved. Chipper days. Uh, I had to change the slide here because of technical glitch, but, um, uh, here's a hundred and fifty-some tons, and Taos County shipped another four point seven tons a week ago. So we have since nine, since two thousand thirteen, shipped hundred sixty-two point one four tons of hazardous people on private properties. We have a chipper program, which is run by the solid waste department. And do it on Saturdays. We, we get organized, set up a date, invite the community, bring your slash, slash in, and the solid waste department will run it through the chipper and move away somewhere. Usually, uh, take it to the solid waste, to the landfill, I understand, to be able to, the landfill. But this is funded by Title III money, which, uh, it has been, we've organized with, and , uh, that funding is going away. So that's also what pays my contract. Um, it would be great if we could figure out how to keep these programs going. Um, so these are the communities that have a ton of chipper days, uh, varied degrees and various areas, really successful program. Here's one, El Salto. They feed it right onto a roll-off dumpster. And those guys are hard. Fire is going to be, it hasn't been very successful. And I remember here, it's had two chipper days. So another way we need to get ahead of this is good ladies planning. You know, and Aiden can speak to this, uh, but this is up in Boulder, Colorado, Tenwater Economics invited us up. Nathan, myself, and our neighbor, Maron from the public, and we got to hand over subdivision. And we had to figure out how to get wildfire safe. It's a really great exercise. Can we do this in the future? By cutting wildfire division, initial tact, I call it the local fire business. My wife is a Photoshop genius. Put that together. Um, it'll be great. Or an, and/or anger. This one is, uh, we save that little cabin and four other houses in Hyattville, set up spray blood system to, and do it for now. So I believe we can face this. Prepare our homes, families, harden our homes, defensible space, understand wildfire. There are three things that drive fire here: fuels, weather, and the power. There's only one of those we can do anything about, and that's fuels. Get out there and work on fuels. Okay? Personnel and firefighter safety, and, and keep that partnership alive. So keep working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Great presentation, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, thank you. I know this is dear to the chairman's heart. Um, can you, you indicated, uh, funding has gone away, so we're not going to be doing chipper days anymore. Is there other grants to continue chipper days, or can you speak on that?
I don't know. The, the chipper program costs seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. Mayor's been, uh, funding for, what, eight, for a year?
Mr. Court. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, we are, we are best prepared for the lack of funding. We've known that the funding hasn't come since last February, and we've been reminding what's left. Um, we're looking at lots of different options. One is potentially using more than just solid waste crews, uh, looking at the public works at the end of the winter season. If there's any overtime left after the snow renewal, we might allow them to do a couple weekends to continue to these chipper days. Um, but we're also working with other partners. We've talked to Talsoil and Water Conservation District to see, we definitely want to keep Mr. Cortez. We have to keep Mr. Cortez. So we're doing what we can with other partners to come up with some of the funding. If not, the county will have to figure that out on our end, and it'll come from something else. But it's a very important draw. Um, all his projects are important, and by years having them, we don't want to lose them just because of funding. So we'll do what we have to maintain the program.
So we don't know if there's any more available outside funding then, is what I hear you saying?
Um, we're looking. We, I'm not saying there's not, but not the source that we had before. The source we had before, that Title III money from the federal government is a giant, and we haven't, we can't count on that. We haven't budgeted on it. We'll do our best to keep up with what we have locally.
So are we, have we exhausted the last grant? Like, we're not going to do any more chipper days now until springtime because we've exhausted the funds?
We are, we're trying to stretch out. We haven't exhausted all of it, but we probably won't be doing any more chipper days until the spring so that we could stretch out what is left and keep doing more when we have better weather.
Yeah, a chipper day is a time of year, it's what I call the roof syndrome, where sunshine, we don't really think about, but the roof is leaking, you know, like people don't think about, uh, wildfire prevention, almost until there's actually smoke in the air and something's burning somewhere. And then people start to get really serious about it. And I, that's a problem of mine. I, I want to get it, get the message out all year round, get people thinning over the winter, you can even burn, you know, or spark pilot and get ready for that chipper to come in the spring.
Mr. Chairman, is it feasible to, uh, you said the mulch goes into the landfill, maybe it's needed there, but is, have you explored, uh, selling the mulch like San Francisco does, or they're putting it and using it in parks? Has that been explored to keep it out of the landfill?
Uh, I don't know if it's any significant amount at one time, you know, over the course of the season even. Did it be feasible to turn into wood pellets or some sort of thing? That's something to work on, is what to do with all the small language wood. We have some big funding hopefully coming up for, uh, for fuel thing through the Rio Grande Water Fund and RCS. Um, one of the things we need to do is bolster up the contractors that are competent enough to get out there and do the work. Now, because we've got to build it up like this, we can't have all this fuel coming out of the forest and nothing to do with it. We either need to chip it and find something to do, the biomass, ranch, uh, or put pellet program or something like that.
Mr. Court.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, right now, we're using the mulch port is into going to the existing landfill, it's to remediate the old landfill. So we may not be making money on it, but we're saving the money we would have to spend for a different kind of material to remediate our landfill. So it's been a great cooperative in that sense. Um, and the solid waste appreciates what we're getting, and it goes exactly to covering up the areas of the old landfills that are under remediation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excellent report. How, how did Mini Go and Pinyasco for CWPP? Did, did, did you get a good turnout?
Not yet. Actually, I'm going to sign my contract today. I'm going to update the CWPP.
Oh, okay. Um, so that hasn't happened yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll be working on that. It's mid-June, yeah, till July first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, I know you're dying for a break, but we want to try to do the consent agenda and then do a break, okay?
Let's do it, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is item eleven, the consent agenda. I will now, uh, read the consent agenda. If any commissioner has an item that they wish to pull off, they will note that, and I'll read the next business following item, uh, the consent agenda passage. Item A is approval of DFA number eight, twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust twenty, uh, two thousand eighteen fiscal year final budget to increase revenue and expenditures associated with law enforcement services being provided to other agencies, especially events. Item B is DFA number nine, twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the twenty eighteen fiscal year final budget to establish budget for juvenile adjudication fund and to transfer temporary cash from capital fund. Item C is an approval of DFA number ten, twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the twenty eighteen fiscal year final budget to establish a budget for recycling, a legal dump from the Raid Act, the purchase of a recycle trailer, and to transfer temporary cash from capital fund. Item D is another DFA resolution, number eleven, twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the two thousand eighteen fiscal year final budget to establish a budget to account for the revenue and expenditures of grant agreement number eighteen E seven for our E nine one one public safety answering point, our PSAT and related services. Item E is an approval of contract TCC twenty seventeen dash one one seven, Conión, Four Street of Pot Creek Thinning. Item F is approval of contract TCC twenty seventeen dash one one eight, human resource, HR, the hill, small products, Pot Creek Thinning. Item G is approval of contract TCC twenty seventeen one one nine, Pozo, Wood Milling, Pot Creek Thinning. Item H is approval of amendment one to contract TCC twenty sixteen dash zero zero two, A one Triad Enterprises Incorporated. Item I is approval of grant agreement with the State and Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs. We're going to support stake library division for the Tafo library located at Tafo Community Center. Item J is approval of MOU between the Village Quest and Taos County for legislative appropriations to the Village Quest for appropriation seventeen dash B four one two two dash STB, Questle Wells and Water Systems. Item K is approval of a memorandum of understanding between Mora County and Taos County for legislative appropriations to the County of Mora for appropriation sixteen dash eight two four six two for the purchase of an ambulance. And finally, item L is first quarter financial review, twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year final budget. That is the consent agenda as read. Any questions regarding any items, commissioners? Commissioner McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. If, uh, with your manager could elaborate a little bit more on items I and J.
Okay, so we need to be pulling items I and J from the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept items A through H and K and L?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to accept the consent agenda with the exception of items I and J. Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
I, yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Baker.
Yes. Item I, hold for the consent agenda's approval of grant agreement with the State and Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs, the Mexico State Library Division for the Tafo library located at Tafo Community Center. Uh, Mr. Court, can you elaborate on this for Commissioner McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, this is the grant we receive basically every year. I believe it's GeoVon funding. That was approved by the voters and it was, um, don't have the amount right off the top of my head. Mr. McDonald, do you have the amount?
I'll bet she does.
Hi, Laura Lee.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, yes, the grant agreement is for seven thousand, and we receive this every, every year. This year it's for seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. And it's for the purpose of the Tafo library.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to accept? Someone, Mr. Chairman? I have a motion, like, to approve the grant agreement for the State and Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs for the Tafo Community Center.
Second.
And a second. Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Baker.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, if anyone has a good to elaborate on Taos.
Pretty cool. I'll go with this.
Nice.
You want to stay there, Laura Lee? Item J is approval of memorandum of understanding between Village Quest and Taos County for legislative appropriations to Village Quest for appropriation seventeen dash B four one two two dash STB, Questle Wells and Water System. Leave this is, they got appropriation in the Navy of fiscal region?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, they need a fiscal agent to complete the project on their water system, and so we are assisting them in that.
What, what amount are we talking about?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion to approve the MOU with Village Quest and Taos County for their legislative appropriation as an other degree.
Second and a second. Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Baker.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, I so move for a seven-minute break.
Let's go with a twelve-minute break.
So.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. All right. Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Baker.
Yes.
Hey. Ready? Motion to come back into regular session.
So. Second.
Motion, a second, to come back into regular session. Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald. Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Baker.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is item twelve, contracts, agreements, and moles of jizz. Item A is approval of the order of RFP twenty seventeen dash zero three eight for professional legal services for Taos County water law. Um, good morning.
Uh, good morning, Chairman and Commission. Um, before you win your packet, I, uh, is a stack recommendation in the evaluation committee summary for RFP two thousand eighteen oh three. We, uh, based this out for RFP and only received one response, uh, prior to the deadline of eleven AM Monday, October twenty-third. The offer who responded was Robles Rayal in Anaya, PC. Uh, the criteria within the packet, uh, was deemed responsive and, um, the criteria that we asked for in specifications. Based on the review of the RFP, the evaluation committee recommends to award, um, the RFP two thousand eighteen oh three A for professional legal services for Taos County in regards to water law to Robles Rayal in Anaya, PC, subject to negotiations of a mutually agreeable contract respectfully.
So the motion should reflect, um, the negotiations?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I also move, uh, that we approve this contract based on a mutually negotiated contract.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll go with a second.
Wait, a motion, a second discussion, Commissioner McDonald, for the public's benefit. Is there, what is the total amount we're talking about?
Um, at this time, that is something, um, I'm going to re, yeah, still needs to be discussed with them, um, obviously, because, um, all they can provide was the different rates specified within a level of expertise due to, uh, we don't know how far this is going to come.
We have a cap for this particular, the board, um, allow us a cap of two hundred thousand, as I recall. So that's a parameter to work with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Court call the roll.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
No.
Chairman Baker.
Yes. Okay. Item thirteen, Budget Matters.
Thank you.
This will be a report of fiscal year two thousand eighteen first quarter investment report by our county treasurer, Mrs. Susan Trigill. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Commissioner, and you and audience. Um, I give you an updated, um, page. Um, I, and I believe that you got the report, um, broken out a little differently. So it's, you're, I went ahead and gave you a packet right in front of you. And, um, the investment committee meeting was held on October the twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen at one thirty PM in the clerk's conference room. Those in attendance were, uh, myself as the treasurer, Paul Sanz, saying the chief deputy treasurer, Mary Ann Gonzalez, the accountant, the one for the treasurer's office, Deandra Cordova, manager, um, Lupita Martinez, finance director, was, um, represented by her alternate, Jonathan Mart, um, Montoya, and, um, Jennifer, uh, commission chair was absent, Rose Vargas, US Bank, the office manager was absent. And I spoke with, um, Rose Vargas from US Bank, and, uh, I asked her to, uh, appoint an alternate so that there would be representation as required that this committee had in attendance. And, um, um, the next item that was discussed was the first quarter of the, um, uh, treasurer's report. And I provided an analysis that, that, that I did for them. And, um, of the GRTs, the, um, cash bound And of the GRTs, the cash balances, the announces that bounced up with the EFA quarterly report that the Finance Department presented to us. And again, there was that quarterly report that EFA also provided for us. So the investment report, we discussed that, and that is the page that you have. Now, what we decided to do so that it would reflect appropriately what is invested for the general fund, we broke it out to the page that you have. Instead of it being the whole, we broke it out to the $3,250,000. That is what is being invested out of the general fund. And then the next page, you will see that out of the indigent fund, there is a million... Oh, excuse me, an evil bet, which is very important. And that is the year-to-date interest term. And that is $15,135.94. And that's huge. We were really excited about that, that the monies are now gaining interest, and significant interest. So we're very happy to report that. And the second page, the indigent fund investment monthly report, we invested a million dollars out of that fund, and $350 has been gained in interest. And then the USDA Florida Fund Investment monthly report also, there is $750,000 that has just been currently invested.
Mr. Chairman, is the indigent fund investment, are you able to hear the same yield as the first page?
Well, if you look at the rates that are there, that is, it's the 1.65 on the... When I'm in Saint Ben, Wisconsin, it's going to yield whatever it is that's invested on a particular city. So it should do very well.
Okay.
Thank you. So what I provided for you, again, is the grant that I prepare. Or the reason being that if you look at the numbers over on this page, I read out the form, and that, again, I went in and put in the cash balance for September, which was reported in $817,646.51. And I did, excuse me, the variance from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 17. Now, that would kill her month. And but then I included the reserves. The reserves for this budget are $29,755.355. And that's the full reserve for the general fund. And so the remaining balance is $19,6291. So if you look at the investment, we have the $3,250,000 we invested, $338,644 above the required reserve. So I wanted to make sure that it was noted that we did invest the reserve, but we have $338,644 above the reserve. But if you factor in also, which I always said, the full reserve would be $970,000, we have a remaining balance of $935,839 in excess that is not invested. So maybe at some point, we should then go ahead and follow it as the Investment Committee, and we might consider maybe investing another $250,000 or maybe a $100,000. We'll just take a look at it and see how that moves on. So that is my report. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner Omer?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's just a report to the Board of Finance, unless you want to go ahead and approve it. That's fine with me, too.
Let's go ahead and approve. Motion accepted. Motion to accept, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the fiscal year 2018 first quarter investment report as given by our County Treasurer, Susan Trigill. Court call the roll.
Commissioner Omer.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Chairman Dargo.
Yes. Thank you, Susan. Next item on the agenda is item 14, the County Manager's reported matters, A through Discussion regarding Commission meeting, the date for January 2018, and discussion regarding Taos County Complex Lighting for Holidays and Closure, review of the NCRTE meeting, and update on various items. Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the first item is the Commission meetings for the month of January. Once again, we are faced with an issue where January 2nd is our first Commission meeting, the day after a holiday. So I would like to request of the Board that we move our January 2nd meeting to the 9th, and then move the January 16th meeting to the 23rd, as the 16th is typically the kickoff of our legislative session. And I'm sure the Commissioners would like to be able to attend at the time now, so...
It's also the NMAC.
Yes, the NMAC kickoff that week as well. So it does seem to make sense for us to have our two meetings on the 2nd and 4th instead of the 1st and 3rd of the month of January.
Any objections, Commissioners?
No.
Great.
So those changes will be made, and you will see that as we get into the year. The next item is discussion regarding the Taos County Complex Lighting for the holidays. I had mentioned that I would like to do a lighting of the complex initiative, and so I'm asking for December 22nd for the Board to give me the approval to offer four hours of admin leave to our staff, so that we've got a amount of lunchtime, and we would work on building up our litos and lighting them the rest of the day, and light them up before we leave for our department. So I would make that request.
Any objections, Commissioners?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman. You have a motion or...
No, we don't need a motion, just...
I just wanted you all to be aware of that, and not be presumptuous that I could do it all on my own.
What day is it?
It'll be December 22nd. We're off the 23rd and 24th, so we'll be doing this, but it's a Thursday afternoon. And of course, Commissioners are...
Yeah. Commissioner Cordova.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the town has got some dates open for their annual Fidelito lighting. I'm wondering if we could talk about that at some point, if the Commission would like to participate in that. I have the dates. I can give that to you to see if we'd like to light the Fidelitos on the plaza. They have a few dates open in December. And those are, well, the 22nd wouldn't work. The 26th and December 30th are open. I'd be willing to volunteer that if there'd be a few other Commissioners that might help or some other Department Heads to do that lighting on the plaza.
I know, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we've talked about the idea of lighting up our complex as well, the week after Christmas. So I'm not opposed to working with the town. I think we'll have our hands full. It'll probably be very beautiful when we're done, so that's my thought, is let's focus on what we're doing here at the complex right now, and if anyone wants to help the town, we can.
And that's the 22nd we're lighting, we're lighting here?
Yes.
And you'll need help?
I think with employees and all of us, we should have the help we need. I think let's keep this accounting initiative and the county can work together. So moving on to review some NCRTE meetings, I had a couple meetings with NCRTE two weeks ago, and so I wanted to make sure to bring those up to the Commission. The first meeting we had included Taoski Valley, the Town of Taos, NCRTE management, and Taoski Valley Village in there. So basically, what the request was is Taoski Valley is asking for a couple additional routes to get up to Taoski Valley during the winter months. NCRTE is willing to do a couple extra routes, but they want to be paid. They want to be compensated for what it takes to staff those and the basic operational costs. So the Town of Taos has previously pledged some funds to these routes. Taoski Valley Lodgers and the Chamber have also pledged some money, and now they're asking if Taos County would be willing to consider checking in on these two additional routes. Basically, we're talking about $20,000 for new route. They're asking for two, so the request to the county is roughly $7,500 for some partial funding. The town's putting in some, as I mentioned, and Taoski Valley Lodgers and the Chamber are putting in some. This isn't something we budgeted for, so I'm not coming to the Commission to ask if there's support for this. It probably could be done on a one-time, non-reoccurring basis. We might be able to find some reserves or other kind of funding to do this on a one-time basis, but we don't have the ability to do it reoccurring without putting into our budget for the long term. So I wanted to bring that up. Mr. Fratrick from Taoski Valley is here to answer any questions on the nuts and bolts of the routes and any details, but basically it serves a lot of the public in the morning, and then the evening route will serve some of the employees from Taoski Valley Inc. that need to get down or get up there. So it does create lodger tax for the town. A lot of lodgers will stay here, and they'll take these routes up to Ski Valley and then bring them back down. So town is going to probably receive some of that lodger tax, and then the additional GRT within the town, if they're spending the money here versus being kind of stuck up there at the mountain. So I wanted to hear the thoughts of the Board on that issue and see if there's any objection to looking for some additional funding.
Mr. Chairman, how much do we contribute to the NCRTE?
Well, apparently, it's all going through GRT. So we have a quarter cent GRT that every dollar collected within Taos County, they get a quarter cent of that. It was to do...
So do you know what the total amount is?
Ah, last year.
I have the...
It's in the $700,000, $800,000 range.
Per year.
Yeah, roughly per year. We had a good year last year, so it went up. Lighting last year, it went over $900,000, but we're on track this year to get back to about the $800,000 range, like we call it.
We were 112% of production. So this particular route, what's the total cost of it?
They estimate roughly $20,000 per route, one way over and back, so they want to... So it's roughly $40,000.
I understand.
That's right.
Twenty thousand divided by two? Yes.
So, Board members, Commissioner Phamborough, it would be estimated about $21,000 for two additional runs during the weekdays, and then also two additional runs during the weekends.
So what particular group you're trying to...
I can work. Can I give them insight? My son takes that all the time. There's a lot of youth that ride that because they don't have driver's licenses and stuff, and then, of course, it's tourists. But I used to take my son to Kachina Lodge to pick up the bus. It's already full by then. So first stop is State Bridge, where you go there, and you get in line, and you... There's a lot of youth that use that, and then State Bridge.
They're counting them.
Oh, yeah. Our school kids use it a lot.
Okay. And so the total amount is $21,000, and that amount is going to be paid, or you're proposing by the Ski Valley?
Sir, we're looking at splitting it three ways. We'd like to try to, the village would pay $7,000, the Town of Taos would pay $7,000, and the county would pay $7,000.
This is fair of operations, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Omer.
I do have some questions, Mr. Chairman, if I may. As Mr. Cordova pointed out to me, NCRTE closed the Sebaku route because they weren't getting enough ridership, and can argue with that.
And it was making employees from Penasquale to the hospital to Superstate to Albertson.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with that. Would I want to go back to lodger tax monies? We continue to see just the flat collection of about $90,000. Are you proposing we take some of the lodger tax money for this endeavor?
Not directly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Lodger taxes are allowable use for transportation, unless we put a little over on the bus. Yeah, but that's not our process with the county, so if, you know, they wanted to apply for it, they could go through the lodger tax board, but I believe our lodger tax board is more interested in heads of events than transportation. But transportation isn't allowable use, so lodger tax... I'm not proposing using lodger tax today, but I think there may be a request coming from Ski Valley, but we'll deal with that.
So could I ask, are GRTs up?
Our GRTs aren't up from last year, because last year was a very good year. It was an extraordinary year, but we're probably back from the year prior. And so we're still in a good place with GRTs. We're still higher than we have been, say, three, four years ago, but we're certainly down from last year when we kept on high water.
So some of the concerts really don't...
I think what we saw increase in GRT was really from all the big construction at the hotel in Penasquale Valley, the age of the airport construction and the mediation at the Monte Chevrons, probably where we saw it. I do think we do see an increase in some of the events, but those are, you know, it's iteration, but it's not a reoccurring that we can count on. Neither was the construction, so that's our main budget for it. Close.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Mark. Isn't there some new construction going on currently up there in addition to the Blake? There's some hotels being renovated. We'll see some more GRTs?
Mr. Board Member, Chairman O'Donnell, they're reconstructing Strawberry Hill, the Beggar Hill, and they're also redoing the KK, totally remodeling the KK up there. So there should be some pretty good GRT coming off of it. I think they're filing quarterly, though, because we haven't really seen it yet, month to month, so we should see a bounce here pretty quick.
Listen, there are talks about another hotel being renovated?
Yes, ma'am. Well, what they're looking at next year is Parcel D, which would be across the stream where all the shops are right now, where Pizza Shack is and all that stuff. They're looking at building underground parking lot, a plaza, a plaza, and then starting on one set of condominiums. There's going to be two sets of condominiums with retail space on the bottom.
Is there another group renovating a hotel that's not connected to the Ski Valley right now?
Yes, ma'am. There's the Austin House is being renovated. Not too sure how much money they're putting into it. I think they're trying to get their ducks in the hole and exactly what they need to do.
So to ask you a very direct question, what participation is the owner of the Ski Valley going to do? Have you approached him if he could help subsidize this route, since this ultimately benefits the ownership of the Ski Valley?
Ma'am, the Ski Valley is going to run the Taoski Valley Inc. shuttles. So I think last year, off the top of my head, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars for them to do that. And what they do is they run them from Taoski Valley Inc. down to the K-Taos parking lot. And anybody can ride that shuttle also. So that's basically what they're planning on doing again this year. Money-wise towards this, they haven't really come forward in Councilmember SAG and also their Transportation Link. It has been in the discussions, and they haven't basically stepped forward and said we'll cover anything on this.
It would just make sense that they would be at the table for this. If we could get a four-way split, I'd be more inclined... I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I would really like to see if it was possible to get a definite answer from Mr. Bacon's group, if he would help with the four-way split that would lower everybody's costs. So if there's any way you could find that out, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item D.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item D, well, this is still C. So the other thing, NCRTE, I'll talk to me about, thinking about the idea of a bus stop in the abandoned area over here of Albright, that used to be Albright, that is now sitting abandoned. There's a couple conceptual drawings that they've been able to put together. It's very conceptual at this point. They haven't really gone any further than coming to us with their first stop. However, they really explored the idea. They would be moving this bus stop over there. There'd be two additional bus stops. They would also try to make a multimodal, so bikes... They would also try to make a multi-modal, so bikes would also be welcome there. And they just feel like it's a perfect use of that space. They would, if we were okay with it, we blessed it, they would start looking into ownership, decide exactly who owns it. It does seem like it's an easement that is either ours or the town of Taos's. So there's some confusion about who owns that easement. And then they would go talk to NMDOT about the idea of putting up some gates and removal of the jersey barriers that are there. They would only be allowed to be used for the buses. So they would come in off of Highway 68 and they would come out on Albright. They have money set aside for mediated funding from the feds to be able to do all the work. They've also, after our meeting, asked about the little area next to it that we have always looked at as a little park, and they would be willing to put some money into that and maintain that park as well if we were interested in allowing them to pursue this idea.
This is our number one stop.
Mr. Chairman, I like this idea, but it would be really nice... I'm just trying to get my ideas to where exactly it's located. If these little huts could be located and set into that vacant land versus immediately off the road there? It doesn't appear like they're immediately off the road because you have the traffic coming in into Albright from Highway 68 and all of a sudden you have this, yeah, where vehicles would have to stop on this curve in order to allow the bus to go.
Let me clarify, Commissioner O'Donnell, they're asking for the abandoned piece of road, the abandoned part, so they wouldn't actually be impeding traffic at all. Their goal would be to turn in prior to Albright, the old Albright entrance, and have that meant specifically for bus traffic, where they wouldn't have any pedestrians or, well, as many pedestrians as any other traffic.
So Royton Hammond claimed this?
I don't know. Had not adopted to sit down in the rez over here, just thought I got the opportunity to sit down. I think he does claim it, but there is no, as I can understand, a clear path of ownership at this time. It looks like it was an easement or that may have been granted to the county or the town maintained it. So the question is, who really owns the easement, the town or the county? But as far as ownership rights to that, I don't think anyone individually has an ownership right to that piece of property.
So the little park area then is what is to the left?
That is ours, as I understand it, we owned from the sidewalk this way, the sidewalk north is ours.
That's a great idea, I like it.
They're really excited about, like I said, this is their top stop and the ownership is the most of it.
Because of the conflict.
And look at the way it would take up congestion right here where you kind of run into the bus and stuff like that. I have Commissioner O'Donnell first and then Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a great idea, but I do believe that ownership will be contested by the Cunningham, so it would be wise for you to check with his attorney.
Maybe he'll like this idea, this is a community idea.
We'll definitely go through that, like I said, our T D, this is, their first stop is coming to the county and make sure that we even, that they can get our blessing and go further and explore further. So they'll now, if we're okay with this, they'll look into it some more and see what else it entail when they're...
Commissioner Blackwell?
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, I think it's a great idea too. I think they'll work out the legal issues on the easement. And I'm in favor of chipping in on the blue bus too. The blue bus is kind of a governmental thing. The corporation is doing their own bus routes. I'm not interested in trying to... Yeah, I think it's a, I think, I think the town and the Ski Valley arguably benefit a little more than us, but it's still a good plan and a lot of people are going to use it. So that idea, I agree with Commissioner Romero in a spirit of cooperation to join in on that.
And going back to this, maybe suggest the idea of, you know how they have those arms that go up and down? Just where the person driving the bus would be, you press a button, automatically the gates would go up. So, because I have a feeling that you have, I'll be trying to go in through there anyway.
I do think that's their, their goal is to have something like that where people are still kind of what they have in Santa Fe, to keep the, to warn people or to stop people from driving over the intersection when the train's coming through. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I can comment to one of the commission statements. As our county manager indicated, this would be a one-time recurring amount for the route to the Ski Valley, you know? And so, you know, there's a possibility of putting in the budget, but that's why I said it would make it more conducive if we could get another partner in. It's less money for the entities, so that's still my opinion and suggestion.
Well, for the clientele that use that service, I think that's a minimal contribution and there are more routes and buses needed for this, I'm serious, to fill up before they get to Kachina, before they can get to their biggest stop at the Silver's North.
Do you want to remove this?
Yes, this would be moved over there and that would be the living stop. They also had concerns with all the pedestrian traffic that we receive from the parking lot over here to the courthouse. They always are dealing with...
Does that make it easily accessible to the elderly? Because I see a lot of elderly people or folks with disabilities.
Well, they would have to move a little further. They'd have to come this way. The money that RTD is using is ADA money specifically, so it would have to, the project would have to be ADA compliant by the end, where they wouldn't get reversed their federal funds. So I think, I don't know if I can answer your question specifically, certainly it would be a little more difficult for the elderly to get from there to here, but it's a trade-off.
And, Mr. Chairman, in memory of Poochie Denver, who was an advocate for seeing that area that was referred to as a park further developed. And I hear that the group would, might be willing to help in improving that area? In addition, that would be, is that what I heard you say, that they would...
They mentioned that they would be willing to look at that, they did any specifics at this time, adding seating or benches, tables.
Little lunch area.
I like that because...
A little shelter.
Poochie wouldn't be turning over in her grave, you know? Because she always wanted that little area to be expanded into some kind of a park. So I'm in favor, providing all these other legal issues can be resolved.
So the other topic we had a discussion on, this is purity discussion. The RTD, as you know, took over the Chili Diet a couple years ago and in that they acquired a building on Dia Lane and in between two town buildings. They're operating that quickly. So they asked me if we had any man, if we'd be willing to work with them on it, although we didn't really have a lot of man. But so they did talk about the idea of collaborating on a fueling station. So if they do move from that area, they're going to find another piece of property that Valley built themselves in the shop and they would like to try and do a fueling station and they would like to know if we'd be willing to partner on that. They told me, "What's my duty?" So just another thought, topic of discussion with RTD. So those are my RTD items. Thank you, Mr. Fratrick. Moving on, I have a couple other, I did attend an MFA order meeting. We presented to that MFA board last week and I thought that went pretty well as a discussion on collaboration with them and the need for more housing in our community. I also attended an EHR training a couple weeks ago that was put on by the New Mexico Municipality, and it was a very insightful training. I will tell you, I'm even more thankful for what you guys did today in passing the order and instant resolution because that training scared me to death. It really is one of those things that made me realize the importance of me providing training to supervisors. And that's something I intend to do. I was fortunate enough to have three of our municipalities in the room with us in Albuquerque and all of them agreed that they would be willing to help sponsor a training, invite everyone here to Taos. So the town of Taos, Village Questa, Ski Valley, River, as well as our neighbors in Polfax County would all be willing to help pitch in on a training if we had one here. So I'm working really hard to get that. Miss Weber has gotten contact information from the gentleman that presented to us and we're going to see if he'd be willing to come up here to Taos. And it would be a mandatory training for all supervisors. If you are supervising people, I think it's very important that you know all the changes to the rules. Eighty-two percent of people are in a protected class at this point. That, I don't know why we don't treat everyone 100% the same. It just doesn't make sense to me that eighty-two percent of the people are protected and the others are not. We should treat everybody the same. And really, it all comes down to providing the proper training to supervisors and elected supervisors as well. That's really where all these decisions get made and that's where they need the most support. And so it was very eye-opening and I was appreciative that I got to attend that training and I do intend to bring more opportunities for our supervisors to be trained here in Taos. So I just wanted to mention that. The opioid lawsuits that other counties have been entering into. The solicitation of attorneys has been ratcheted up quite a bit. I'll tell you, I have been contacted over and over from many different attorneys about joining in on this lawsuit. And it's not a class action and I've asked a lot of questions of one of the attorneys and thought one of my big questions, "Why would we want to join in on a class action lawsuit?" Fight really hard to get a few pennies at the end, they said, "This is not a class action lawsuit, it's specific to counties. It's different than the AG's lawsuit according to the attorneys." So I'm still doing a lot of research. I just wanted the board to know that maybe our county should enter into some kind of lawsuit at this point, but I think we need to be the ones driving the bus. I never feel good whenever someone's trying to sell us on something. Plus, there's different rates from every attorney. So all these different firms are giving us, one's at 40, but he more accounted that in at 40%. One of the attorneys I had was at 25%, I heard the other was at 10%. So if we do move forward, I want us to get the best possible return for our investment. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Also, if they contact you directly, remind them of the procurement process. It's a contingent basis, it doesn't mean that we are absent of procurement. Just because the money doesn't come until the back end doesn't mean we shouldn't be procuring things accordingly. So really, I believe if we move forward, the RFP would be the proper way to move forward and I'm still looking into it. So there's a good chance we will move forward on entering that lawsuit ourselves, but I wanted it to be on our terms. There's still a lot of concern as well as to whether we can win it. You know, we didn't, our heroin problem in northern New Mexico didn't start with pills. We all know that. It didn't start with pills, it started with heroin. And so part of the burden of proof is to prove that we have bad doctors and pill factories within our counties. That may not be easy to prove. Rariba County got in, they jumped in full force, and now they're realizing that over the last twenty years, they've only really had one claim of a bad doctor. Therefore, they may not have very much of a case to go forward and to really see any benefit from the lawsuit. So there's a lot of things that we still have to wait.
We were being lost, I think those two or three people due to overdoses last week and one day.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll be happy to contact the OMI again, Sarah, who keeps all those stats and breaks down overdose deaths in the county, you know, how many are pills. So I need to reach out to her about the recent suicide on the Gorge Bridge yesterday. So I'm happy to, I needed to get some update stats on drug overdoses in the county. So I will research that. Have you been given any indication of what the payout might be for county?
No, they can't give you an indication on that yet. They need you to believe that we're going to make out very well, but there's no indication that they can prove that.
This is against the Department of State?
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner, one option that I would encourage it all to explore as this might be threatened or pending litigation, you could have an executive session and have as many firms as you wanted come present to you as a group, ask your questions and have appropriate enclosment to do so.
Versus that?
Yeah.
Mr. Cordova?
The next item, I wanted to remind the board that tomorrow is the ribbon cutting at the Youth of Valley Center from 1:30 to 2:30. It's the completion of our CDVG project. All commissioners are invited and it's final, we're glad to have that project wrapped up. We intend to work on our next phase of CDVG, so we're already looking at the different options for the county. So by all means, if you can attend, please let us know so we can make a notice in court in case we have more than three. And then the last thing I have on my list is the senior center building. We've been having a lot of preliminary meetings to receive the input from the senior center staff. We've also met with the clerk as part of that building. We'll have a little bit of storage specific for the clerk's needs. And so we've got some preliminary drawings in and I think upon everybody kind of signing off, we're going to get moving. We anticipate groundbreaking in the springtime with ribbon cutting the following summer. So we're very excited about that, and even in the long term is indicating we may get a ground agreement really soon and we can really take off and move on that building, so we're excited about that. And along with that, facility built has met with us on a couple different fire station concepts and we'll probably be moving forward with them to keep moving our fire station projects. Any staff, any questions from the board? All right.
So all these, this bus route, the allocation for the bus will come before us again?
It won't need to come before you, all these are within the authority of the manager. I wanted the board to be aware before I made a decision on behalf of the county. So based on what I hear today, I think we'll go ahead and move forward. I will ask and see if there's a better allocation split on the route and if we can get away with paying as soon as we're more than happy to pay. Thank you.
All right, item 15, Commissioners' reported matters. Item A is discussion regarding the use of historic county courthouse, Commissioner's office to be used by Arts and Economic Development Group sponsored by Taos. Commissioner Blackwell?
Thank you, Chairman. When I made a request to put this item on the agenda, I did it through an email to the chairman and the county manager. And I mistakenly said that this group was sponsored by the town. They're not officially sponsored by the town, just want to make that clear, you know how things are with councilmen and whatnot. Somebody could get upset by that. But they do have potential affiliation with the town because one of their missions is to try and revive the arts and cultural district and possibly the main street project. The board is Bobby Gonzalez, Tom McCarthy, Rose Vargas, Bobby Saad, Elana Spruce from the pueblo. It's really, in my mind, an impressive group and it seemed to me to be a legitimate request. Normally, I would not ever bring this on the agenda because it's an administrative function to determine which uses within the Old County Courthouse are appropriate or not. And then if administration needs guidance from their commission, they would put it on the agenda. But I felt like because Commissioner O'Donnell has taken that space for her office, it put the administration in a difficult position and so I brought it forth. Not necessarily to specifically advocate for this group, although I do feel as though it's a legitimate function, but just to bring to the board my concern that, you know, one commissioner using a space in the Old County Courthouse as an office should not take precedence over community uses. And Cindy Spray, who has put this group together with some encouragement from the town, obviously she's put a good group together, went in to talk to Commissioner O'Donnell about it, but was not positively received. I just don't feel as though it's appropriate for one commissioner to take a space at the Old County Courthouse that takes precedence over community functions. I don't know about the rest of you, but whenever I need office space, there's always good spaces here available. So I wanted to bring that up because it's a concern of mine and so I did. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, that was a discussion item only. Item B is a request to serve as a core team member in the Rio Fernando de Taos revitalization team. Commissioner O'Donnell, what is that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your packet you have the fact sheet that the group has agreed upon, it's a public release, so it is there in your packet. And commission statement reads, "A revision is a revitalized Rio Fernando de Taos watershed that builds on tradition and raises innovation to connect people to ecosystems, clean water and vibrant agriculture." And to further expand on that, I have asked Maya Anthony from the Taos Land Trust, they are one of the lead groups who are receiving the funding for this project. And I've asked her if you will permit, Mr. Chairman, for her to come forward to the podium and give a brief description.
Come out and ask a quick question. Does county already have a representative on this?
They have staff, but we've been asked that there be elected officials from J Caldwell. And Councilman Hans sits on that as well.
Do we have anything in writing from them requesting that?
This fact sheet is enough. Maybe if we can discuss that.
Hi, Mayor. I'm here on behalf of our executive director, Christina O'Donnell Jones. But I've been recently involved in the Rio Fernando de Taos Revitalization Collaborative. And it was founded, or formed earlier this year in January with the town, Taos Valley Aseki Association, Taos Land Trust, and Nigos Provost in an effort to address the insults on the important river that goes right through the center of town, in fact, alongside these doors. So it's very close to our heart and it has a lot of cultural and ecological importance for Taos's future. So having Commissioner O'Donnell and Mr. Sanchez at the meetings that we've been having since January, that has been invaluable. Having their advice and different perspectives has provided a lot of importance and relevance as to how we move forward in this collaborative. And it's quite an important collaborative because it's bringing so many different players into one room with new ideas, with each of their perspectives on how we can come together and combine forces to really be effective in a long-term plan for how to preserve the Rio Fernando from the upper watershed all the way through to the lower watershed and how that affects each community involved. So again, having the commission's presence in these meetings has provided us with really important guidance in how we move forward on that, both on the legislative side and funding side and just each little odd ends in and out of how we go forward. So we have a quite tall order to fill with this collaborative. Three of our most pressing points are to restore the river for improved ecological function, which would thereby improve water quality and quantity. Revitalize the aseki's off of the Rio Fernando and connect people with that river so that they not only feel connected to place, but they're more likely to pay attention to it for the future and be more invested in what they want to see for this preservation.
Mr. Chairman, most of it goes to private and corporate?
In Canyon, it does. It's quite a bit of private landowners. So the Taos Land Trust is coming in with a unique perspective on how to work with private landowners. But also, there's more service land. More education and outreach for what factors are linked with both healthy and unhealthy watersheds.
Do you think it would be at some point in the future to create some sort of a river easel? Oh, they already exist where someone who's wanting to build needs to stay away from the river. At a certain point, those are protected. But given official easement, I think that would be awesome for trails or whatever.
Yeah.
If at all possible.
Yeah, there has been talk of a trail system that goes along the Rio Fernando, especially the in-town portion where the Taos Land Trust recently has had our office on the twenty acres that will be turned into the Rio Fernando Park. But it's a really unique educational opportunity for both getting people connected to that river and then linking it with public health opportunities for trail base.
So back to the agenda item. What is being asked of us here today is for Commissioner O'Donnell to replace Nathan as our...
No, no, Mr. Chairman, in addition.
But we have a representative already.
Well, that's staff. This is a commission. And I would like to say I have enjoyed these meetings. There are no formal votes. It is a consensus-building organization. And I do, there was a reference in a meeting with Mr. Caldwell that, and I can give some more clarification, but I would really appreciate if you allowed me to be on this board officially. That there was talk that there should be more representation by...
There should be a letter...
Elected officials.
Mr. Sir, there should be a letter from the organization to us asking that and to appoint. And that would be the proper procedure.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't like to say...
You can handle it in the next meeting if they'll give us that letter request later.
I don't think, did they get a letter? Nathan never got a letter. Why do I have to have a letter? That doesn't make any sense to me, Mr. Chairman.
Because we didn't appoint Nathan. We're appointing, if they're asking the commission to have one, it's the same as all of our appointments to the other boards that we have. I don't object to you being on it. I'm just trying to do the procedure correctly. So you missed revenue in what I'm saying.
All right.
Just ask for the procedure to be correct.
So let's just put it on the agenda in a couple of weeks or...
With a request, a formal request.
Is that something that you need additional in writing from the Taos Land Trust or from members of the collaborative?
The collaborative, if that's what she's going to want to be a part of. Because we already have representation as the board was made up. So if they're wishing to expand that to have two people from Taos Kelly, you just need to know that for sure.
Thank you.
Send a letter request if they're changing their board structure and they're asking us to appoint a commissioner onto the board. That's all we need. It's just procedural. I don't care who's on the board. It's just that we're under the procedure.
And thank you for your support, Mr. Chairman. It has always been, for instance, John Miller from the planning is on the board and so is Fritz Hahn. So it's always been elected official from the town and one from the county. And I was invited to this board because it is in my district primarily. And the headwaters are on Forest Service land, just to let you know. It does include Forest Service land and private land. We want to clean up the river and stop the pollution and do what we can with climate change to increase the water flow volume, which is a large task, but can be done. We can increase the river flow through various programs. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it'll go on the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I kind of wanted to revisit Commissioner Langmore's thoughts on the... Thank you, thank you, Maya. On that group at the old courthouse. Yes. When are we going to be, when's work going to start on that?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, architectural design is pretty much made most of the biggest decisions. There are options now going forward on how we want to work on the procurement and if we want RFP out, we're contracted. There's options to decide facility that we could do a CES vendor, someone that can come in sooner and get started sooner, or you could do the RFP process, which will drag it out a little bit longer. But answer your question, we could start as soon as there'd be next year.
So maybe about five months or so?
Yes.
Okay, so how many square feet is that?
This group needs how much space?
It's just a great space. You know that space.
I'm not, I haven't been able to help you on that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You guys got windows and privacy and it's a big, beautiful space that Commissioner O'Donnell is taking over. They want to bring a conference table, a beautiful conference table in there that other people could use. And they just want to meet and bring some...
Do they have meetings at certain set times or...
I'm sure that they would. I'm sure that they would. It wouldn't take up much of their time. They approached the commissioner and she basically said no because she considers it her space.
So is there a way then that you could send it off to where they wouldn't go into your space?
And they must be able to use the internet in the county case court because that's public.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just, a couple of things I thought just had been taken care of by our county manager. When this was asked of me, I went back and followed a procedure that let management decide. They offered Miss Spray the space. I attempted to point out to Miss Spray, by the way, the meetings would be Wednesdays at five thirty. And they have yet to have a meeting. And I explained to her the issue with the five months. We're all going to have to be out of there. And explained that the focus of the I G C has turned to one of economic development and that perhaps she should join our group because they don't have funding. They don't have a main street designation. I don't know if they have an arts and cultural district designation. And I attempted to point out to her, those were the reasons I wanted to point out that Strong at Heart used the office. And I'm open to any community groups that want to meet, but we do have A P A accessibility issues. So it's hard to point that out.
And certainly should be holding everything here then.
So is there other spaces at the old courthouse?
Nothing, nothing, the mural room. The mural room, the mural room has bad lighting, bad sound and no privacy.
Okay, and speaking of bad lighting, we were awarded that twenty thousand dollars from the government heritage group. We could possibly utilize that money. They need us to utilize that money to possibly utilize some of that.
I'd love to see a light, maybe the jury room. We can even have the jurors as well.
Jury room. Why would one commissioner get to take up the office space when there's community functions? Why would she be able to say no to a group that includes Bobby Gonzalez, Rose Vargas? I mean, it's crazy.
Right, but is there other space available that they could utilize?
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we did offer the mural room, which they accepted. Hesitating even being accepted to take the space in the mural room if that's all that was available.
I say we prefer, they would much prefer.
They would prefer because of the lighting situation and privacy.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that Commissioner from District Five, Four speaks incorrectly because I went for protocol and management made a decision. It was relayed to them and yet they continued to ask me. So I feel I did my best to follow protocol and now I do not like being accused of what or if the reasons were given. Shorts will all be out in five months. They've never met. It's, I don't understand about moving in a table. I don't get it. But, you know, if you want to bring it to the commission as you're doing, I mean, everybody can weigh in on it. So I don't know what to say. I follow the protocol of what management... And they took care of it, okay? They took care of it, but yet there's this kind of insistence that I don't understand. So I wanted to make that clear.
Are you, I mean, is meeting space available with your commissioner for all of us to hold meetings? And you told me the reason that you don't want to meet here because you don't have an internet. And I just, I feel that's not...
I don't know what this has to do with this discussion. The internet sucks here, but he knows I can't get on. It's a terrible place to conduct business or even download files. So in a tiny, little claustrophobic space, I've offered this room to any other commissioners if you don't want to use it. You know, last time we had a group use it, something was stolen out of my office. That's no inference that that would happen to this group. I'm just telling you, imagine it, talk to them. So I don't understand why you keep bringing this up.
Just as any other commissioner asks for some agenda on the O M I request. Mr. Black.
So let's clarify this. And Leandro, is it administrative's position that if this group wants any space, they should use the mural room?
Well, yeah, the mural room's available. I will say it does make it difficult to make decisions if half of the upstairs is faded. And so that is, it might have been through the process, but the process isn't always easy to adhere to if we don't have any state over half of that floor.
So that's the problem, Commissioner O'Donnell. It's not even specifically about this particular group. The problem in my mind is that you have appropriated the best space on the top floor and somehow, community groups have to come to you to ask for that space.
No, Mr. Chairman, I also would have appreciated if you followed parliamentary procedure and referred to me as a commissioner for District Five in my name. I believe this was handled to management and I will yield to what management says. End of story. Now, when anyone asks, I take it to management. So please do not keep saying that.
Okay, so you have no objections to that either?
I said if it's a management decision and they are going to change their mind, so be it. However, I would like to see some movement on that twenty thousand dollar grant for the lighting because I understand that was, I don't know what the status of it, but...
We're going to lose it.
We're going to lose that money if whoever is in charge, if it's Mr. Sanchez, doesn't act on moving forward. So, you know, you complain about lighting. This could have been resolved, what, we had this grant three years ago and nothing's happened? So we can correct the lighting right away if something as small as this could be taken care of. Otherwise, maybe it's not important, we lose this twenty thousand dollars.
I agree with what you're saying there. Commissioner Black.
Yeah, well, Commissioner from District, I don't...
Five.
Five. Commissioner from District Five.
Thank you.
This is, this is not about the lighting. You know, this is about the use of that space. And so I'm glad to hear that you have no objection to this group using that space.
At the end.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad to know that because that was not my impression.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the adjournment.
You still have...
Of future items. Future items, I apologize, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, at some point I would like to give an update from Solid Waste on recycling overall, what they're doing. I think I had asked Mr. Manager about getting recycling cardboard bin in Chonmi Saw. I'd like to know the status of that. Also, as you know, they were recognized for their recycling certifications. And that is kind of in light of the threats of the town to close recycling in January. I'd like to see if we could brainstorm ways and get some ideas of what we're doing and what's being done in the solid waste transfer station. So at some point when it works, I would like to have that on the agenda for presentation from Solid Waste where we can interact and discuss how we can save glass recycling, you know, get some numbers. So I'm asking for that at a future date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir, another item I just thought of. The intersection to C one ten U N M off course area, the lighting there. I believe we have an agreement with the state of New Mexico to update those lights or to put new light bulbs or whatever is required. Can we have our manager look into that? There are a few more accidents.
Actually.
Yeah. And I think it's because of that, they keep getting those sunnies in the center of the island. It's bad out here often when those vehicles get those sunnies.
The ambulance bay right there.
Commissioner, so the lighting is out? You tell them that the lighting is...
We're doing that.
Are you from the accidents, do you think?
No, probably not. Just, in fact, they need to cross the accidents because people don't really... They're on, kind of on it.
Anything else?
Just under announcements.
Okay.
I went to manufacturing today. I'd like to hand out some items that Private Label Select gave us during our tour. It was a great tour, so I just wanted to hand out some of them.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, District Five.
No, Robert's rules of order, the question was wrong. That's a reference in that guide. What are you getting?
Basilene.
All right.
As expensive as it is, it's a party gift.
It's basilene.
And she gave me deodorant. A little reference, she said that I needed that. So, it's expensive. That's our comment. We'll just ignore that. I thank everyone for being at our meeting today, and I asked for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And this is for Caldwell.
Commissioner, my, Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, Commissioner Black, and my, we have a way.
District 4, Fisher.
That's an inaccurate way to address each other.
Chairman, I disagree.
There's a shock.
Chairman.
Yes. Have we signed everything on?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Lisa.